Well, good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Gig Harbor City Council Study Session of Thursday, September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. The time is two oh three P M. And I will turn it over to our city clerk for a roll call.
Councilmember Barber?
Here.
Councilmember Dunson?
Here.
Councilmember Henderson?
Here.
Councilmember Lichten?
Here.
Councilmember Rodenberg?
Here.
Councilmember Storset?
Here.
And Councilmember Wood?
Here.
Great. And welcome to Daniel Johnson from Harbor Hope Center. He is our first presenter today, and we're so honored to have you here to see or hear and see an update on everything that you guys are doing over there. So take it away.
Thank you so much. And Josh was kind enough to allow me to submit a PowerPoint a couple of days ago. And I did catch a little typo in there. One of the numbers was off, and I have a more updated version. Can I just share my my screen?
You sure can.
Okay, good. That's when you want to make sure that your surfing habits are always appropriate. You never know when you're going to shift your screen here. Let's see.
That's right.
Yeah, okay, I'm gonna share this here. Desktop one. Okay. Can you? Oh, it says open system. Allow Zoom to share your screen. I can you see the? Can you see the PowerPoint?
No.
No, it's asking for me to change my settings somehow. Is there a quicker way to do that? So I don't waste your time?
Uh, Josh, can you help out? I'm not sure.
Normally, it's just share your screen, and so I'm sharing my screen, but it's
I don't know of a simpler way to do it on your end from there.
Let's see here. Well, it says share screen, so I'm going to do that. It says desktop PowerPoint. Let's try that. Allow Zoom to share your screen. It's telling me I need to open my preferences and change some privacy settings. So I have I've never been asked to do that before. Any of you smart people have a quick way to do that. Otherwise, we could use the one I sent you, Josh.
Yeah, let me pull up the one that you sent me, and we'll just do that if there's a
way we won't waste everybody's time. How's that?
Yeah, hold on one second here. Make sure I've got it ready.
Yeah, and you can just let us know when we get to the slide that has the incorrect number on it and let us know what that new number is.
Yeah, I'm actually going to, um, there you go. So now I have it right in front of me. Perfect. See, I turned the heat back up on Josh, and now he has to do it. There we go. Perfect.
Hold on one more second here.
Thank you for doing that.
Is that still coming through?
Perfect.
Yes, I can see that. I think everyone can. Yeah.
Yeah, just let me know when you need to skip slides, and I will try to keep up.
So there's twenty-two slides, and I the last thing you all want to do is sit through a thirty-minute PowerPoint. So I'm going to move very quickly so that we'll have plenty of time for questions at the at the end. But this just helps me organize my thoughts a little bit. And I just want to say thank you very, very much. You're all very busy people. You're all smart folk. You're wonks and nerds like myself, so feel free to to stop me at any time and ask questions. Harbor Hope Center was established in two thousand and nineteen. Our IRS paperwork is dated January thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen, so that's when we kind of marked the birth of our organization, so pretty young organization. We have a mission statement or a vision statement of breaking the cycle of homelessness among Washington's youth. Next slide. I wanted to set the stage for you a little bit with some statistics that we get from the U S S Interagency Council on Homelessness. These are Washington-specific numbers. During the two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen school year, there were just shy of forty thousand public school students experiencing homelessness over the course of the year. Twenty-two thousand nine hundred and twenty-three experienced homelessness on any given day. And that was, I have there the number sixty-three ninety-two, and that's the corrected number. I have sixty-three ninety-two unaccompanied homeless students, period. And so I just wanted to make sure that we had a clarification on that. Wasn't just between the ages of eighteen, twenty-one. That was actually students in the school system. Next slide, please. And I could just I'll just point like that to keep it going. How about that, Josh? Youth homeless statistics as of Ju- July, there were an estimated forty-three hundred people in Pierce County experiencing homelessness. Thirteen hundred emergency shelter beds, thirty safe parking units across the county. You know, it's fairly new program. A lot of us working together on that. A Band-Aid solution, you know, people obviously staying in their car, and it's not the best solution, but it's a great first step. Leaving about twenty-nine hundred and seventy people without shelter every night. To get real specific, in the Peninsula School District, which serves Gig Harbor and the Peninsula, they have identified two hundred and seventeen students who were experiencing homelessness in the two thousand and twenty-one school year. So those are the most current numbers. When we started Har- Harbor Hope Center, I did this horse and pony show probably about two hundred times. One of the lines I used was that, hey, did you know that in Gig Harbor, a hundred and forty-nine of our students were couch surfing over the course of a year? People are pretty surprised to hear that number. Well, this is an updated number of two hundred and seventeen students who are quote-unquote unstably housed. I'm simplifying that and using the term homeless students. When you talk about kids who are unstably housed, you're talking about those in shelters, hotels, motels, doubled up, sharing the housing of others due to loss of of housing or economic loss in their own family. And then unsheltered. So when you hear the word unsheltered, that would be those living in substandard or inadequate housing, campgrounds, vehicles. I mean, that's the kind of, you know, when you think of somebody who's quote-unquote homeless, you're really often thinking of somebody who is fits in the category of of unaccompanied as a youth. And then one other note, for those of you who are familiar with McKinney-Vento, that piece of key legislation, which impacts homeless youth, that means if you have a homeless student, they lose their house somewhere during the school year, the school district, you know, it is incumbent upon the school district to make sure that that student can continue to get to the same school. So, for example, we've had kids at Gig Harbor High School who actually live in lived in Lakewood but lost their home. We received a phone call from Gig Harbor High School, and one of the counselors there, and they had a student who needed to go to the dentist, but there was no family member available to take them to the dentist. We got a volunteer to take this young woman to the dentist. The volunteer sat in the parking lot, by the way, for three hours because this student had never been to a dentist. She was from Ghana, and she's in Gig Harbor High School. So these kids are covered under McKinney-Vento, which is legislation that makes a way for homeless kids, but schools don't always have the resources to 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 make it happen. So the schools often come to us to make McKinney-Vento work. And so their definition, by the way, of homelessness is really broad. It's just lacking fixed, regular, or adequate housing. So that two-seventeen number is kind of a catch-all number for all these kids who basically have had their lives upended because of a housing situation. So we've provided shelter beds, life skills, clothing, many other supportive services to twenty-eight students experiencing homelessness since January of this year. It may seem like a small number. But when I say that number twenty-eight, that those are kids who've actually been in our shelter bed. They actually had a mentor. They have a drug counselor. They have somebody assigned to them twenty-four hours a day to make sure that they're put on a path toward independent living. We're currently serving four male youth who have aged out of foster care in our Care Home for Boys, in addition to the other clients. And we've served three females who have aged out of foster care in the past year. So it's it's kind of crazy that we've had that that four out of six of the kids in our emergency shelter right now have all aged out of foster care. Harbor Hope Center of Washington, by the way, we're using the the title Harbor Hope Center of Washington because we believe that we're an organization that it should be modeled across the country. Essentially, we're creating a beta model for how a school district can provide a safety net for its students from the moment they enter school until the moment they graduate and head on toward independent living. We have what we call a Provide a Home program. So that's just a fancy catch-all again for the two care homes that we own and the host homes we recruit in the community. So we have two care homes that are staffed twenty-four hours a day. One for young men, one for young women, and they have a capacity to serve forty-eight students a year. They're transitional programs, ninety days long. Sometimes it takes a hundred and twenty days, and sometimes it takes a hundred and fifty days to help these kids get on their feet to save for first and last months. But right now, we have expanded from four to six beds at each of our shelters. And and our and both of our shelters are at capacity. We've also been recruiting host homes in the community. One of our partners, one of our dear partners is an organization called Coffee Oasis. Many of you are familiar with the great work they do. They had eight or ten homes, host homes during, you know, that that basically shut down during COVID. I don't need to to tell you about the impacts of COVID on the city, on the nonprofits, on the businesses. But it made it very, very difficult for all of us to recruit volunteers because nobody wanted extra humans in their house, right? So we basically, in partnership with Coffee Oasis, we said, well, we'll we'll get these host homes up and running on our end. And they're doing the referral right now in Gig Harbor, so they call us and say, we have a student. Can you get him into a host home? And so far, the answer has always been yes. Now, just one final note about host homes. They're the cheapest emergency shelter beds you can have. Because it's there's some administrative bandwidth that gets expended. But you know, these are families who just step forward and out of the kindness of their heart, make a room available in their home, and they walk alongside a student, sometimes for as long as an academic year or more. So our Provide a Home program consists of our care homes and our host homes. Next slide, please. Thank you. Harbor Hope Center is breaking the cycle of homelessness, as I said, in different ways. In addition to a home, and by the way, it's the difference between a house and a home, but we provide a home. Our meals, we serve three meals a day. We have people from the community come to our care homes and volunteer to teach our youth how to cook a meal. We provide food, and I want to give a big shout out to Fish Food Bank. Fish Food Bank allows us to come in every single week and to collect groceries for our care homes. And between Fish and this other great organization called Costco, we're able to pay the bills to keep these students fed every single day. We provide new clothes for every student who comes into our program. That is made possible with a partnership with Kiwanis Club. And Kiwanis Club gets a notification from us. They actually take that student out and buy them brand-new clothes. Isn't that awesome? I love that's one of my favorite parts of this program is all the as the way we work together with other organizations, so there's no duplication of services. And I would hate the idea that some young person who's already just feeling really bad about their life, you know, that we're like taking them to Goodwill. Nothing wrong with Goodwill, but we're taking them out. We're buying them new school clothes, and that's pretty cool. Life Skills Program, anyway, where from helping somebody learn to brush their teeth to helping them get a driver's license or an I D or a bank account. Mentoring, every student gets a mentor from the moment they come into the care home. They get a drug counselor. They get career counseling. They get job assistance, and they get lots and lots and lots of transportation, which is a huge issue in Gig Harbor and the Peninsula, but I don't need to tell you guys that. Next slide, please. That's for another day. Our mentoring program serves as a fence at the top of the cliff, and our Provide a Home program is the ambulance at the bottom of the cliff. It's an old analogy. But foundations like to ask us, they go, hey, it's great that you guys are spending all this time, money, and effort to get these kids housed. What are you doing to make sure this doesn't keep happening? Well, that's part of this beta model we're creating, and we actually have a school teacher now who's starting to recruit in the middle schools. And we're saying to the counselors, we took all the counselors, and we invited them to our office, and we bought them a sandwich. And we said, hey, we know you do a great job of getting these kids into Voc Tech and into college, et cetera, et cetera. Would you let us know if you find a student, and we kind of are worried about them, the wheels are getting wobbly a little bit before they're experiencing homelessness, before they have an identified drug addiction? And and so we want to, we want to address this problem, break the cycle before the cycle even kicks in. Next slide, please. We've served seventy-two students since we've started. And by the way, it's that we've served hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of students. But that's seventy-two who've gotten kind of the full-service treatment. And by actually living in a care home for a period of time with full staff assigned to them, we've provided this is a number that goes back to July thirty-first, fifty-seven hundred and eighty bed nights and seventeen thousand four hundred and thirty meals. Harbor Hope Center provides a a program, Provide a Home program is offered mentoring to over two dozen students. And we've made over three thousand food deliveries to insecure food insecure families and over seven hundred pair of new shoes and sets of school supplies. By the way, we didn't do food delivery till COVID. That was a new thing. We identified that need, and we jumped in with backpacks for kids. And so we do those deliveries, I believe, twice a week to twenty-four different families, and that is growing. Next slide, please. Thank you. I want to tell you a couple of quick success stories about how we're breaking the cycle of homelessness. This is, these students have all given us permission to tell their stories. I have juxtaposed a couple of stock photos, and I've rearranged a couple of other photos for student privacy. I want to be honest with you and tell you that. But this is actually a picture of a young man by the name of Chris. This is Chris. This is not a stock photo. Chris was from a generationally homeless family in the Gig Harbor area. And he was moved into the care home. He, with the help of mentors, and by the way, communities and schools and other great organizations also help us on a day-to-day basis. He graduated from high school. He worked at the YMCA summer camp, and now he's heading to T C C with housing arrangements in September. Chris has had all kinds of challenges, health problems, but he's a wonderful kid. And by the way, when he'll leave our program, we'll stay connected to him. But he's the first story of success I want to share with you, and I'll move through these very quickly, just four bullets. Next one is is Severn. Severn came from a homeless shelter in Bremerton, landed in Gig Harbor, had no place to go. We got him stabilized in a care home over a couple of months. We reunited him with his family in Texas. He's a perfect example of a student who would just basically have been living under a in a tent or under a tree. It would have had, he would have caused trouble here, to be quite candid with you. Because he just, hey, he had no opportunities, and we found out that he did have family, and we found the family that he thought he would, we thought he would be a good fit with. And we saw to it seamlessly that he was reunited with his family. Next slide is the story of Aviana. This is actually a really cool story because she was homeless. She came to the care home. She expressed her desire for leadership. She showed leadership skills. We hired her for part-time help on the weekend. She's now a full-time resident advisor. And and she's also able to say to these other students that she goes, hey, I know what it's like to be in your shoes. I am in your shoes. And she's saving money for first and last month's rent, and I understand, I was just notified yesterday that she's almost saved enough money for an apartment in the Gig Harbor area. So that's a really cool story. That's AV. AV. Next slide, please. Matt, Mattless, Matt was a great story. He's a young man who went from, that's not a picture of Matt. That is a picture of one of our other clients. Matt went from being homeless to being in a care home to being in a host home. So care home is, you know, you're in there with a lot of other kids. And and there's all kinds of care for you there, but it's still not a family. So after a period of months, we got Matt in with a family. And he got a job as a model, which is pretty cool if you can get it. Not all of us, you know, it would work for us, but but Matt's a model, and he's got a great future ahead of him. And we're still staying connected with him. His mentor continues to be connected, so does his host home, although he has moved out of the host home. So that's a great example of going from homelessness to a care home to a host home to independent living. One last slide and one last success story. There we go. That's Kayla. And she went from homelessness to care home to graduating high school with honors, attending T C C. She's studying pre-nursing beginning this month. Next slide, please. That's just five stories, and we've got lots of them. We've got a few few sads. Let me just tell you. We've we've had some heartbreak stories, right? But but we're we're just going to focus on, you know, on our wins here, and even the heartbreak stories where kids are not thriving. I'll just tell you, we don't leave them alone. We don't abandon them. There's a mentor who still looks out for them. They still have an opportunity to turn back around, but you know, life changes ultimately in our own hands, isn't it? So I just wanted to talk to you about the pay, what we believe is a pay now or pay later philosophy. Unresolved youth homelessness does become a public safety problem. Homeless youth are at increased risk of being robbed, trafficked, raped, assaulted, and addicted to drugs. Those experiencing homelessness across the board are more likely to be perpetrators of crime. According to the National Institutes of Health, homeless people in general, and by the way, I want to, I want to give a quick disclaimer here. Lots, you know, you're picturing this homeless parent or parent in a car trying to make, you know, get enough money to pay for the kids or to get an apartment. I am in no way implicating homeless people in crime. I am suggesting that in the case of youth homelessness, and we have all kinds of stats to show this. If somebody stays disconnected from their social network, disconnected from stable housing environment, according to the National Institutes of Health, they are forty, there's a forty percent higher rate of 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 nonviolent crime and twenty-seven times higher. I I misread that. According to the National Institutes of Health, homeless people committed violent crimes at forty percent higher rates and nonviolent crimes at twenty-seven higher, twenty-seven times higher than home-secure population. Those experiencing homelessness are also more likely to become shoplifters, burglars, car thieves, sex workers, drug dealers, and perpetrators of violent crime if, over the course of early years in the cycle, the problem is not addressed in their life. And again, I can provide statistics on every one of these. Didn't want to overwhelm you with them. It will cost the community more in the end to leave the issue unresolved. It also increases the burden on police and first responder resources. Next slide, please. So we feel that the the solution starts with mentoring. So first things first, before the ambulance comes to the fence, we identify at-risk youth in in the school. And just a shout out to the new superintendent. She's been so receptive to us. I've already had lunch with her twice. She's, I think she's just being very receptive to nonprofits and, you know, community leaders and parents. And, you know, we've been talking to the school district about the fact that communities and schools does a great job with academic mentoring. And we have what's kind of like a big brother, big sister. And that's just for an adult to hang out with a kid who may be struggling. And by the way, I think everybody needs a mentor, but we identify as a struggling student. And just to just to provide a listening ear every week, we've learned from the National Mentoring Project that at-risk youth who have a mentor are fifty-five percent more likely to enroll in college, hundred and thirty percent more likely to to rise to leadership, forty-six percent less likely to start using illegal drugs, and twenty-seven percent less likely to start drinking. Next slide, please. Moving toward the end. Our food prob- program volunteers, as I mentioned, made over three thousand deliveries of groceries to food insecure families, and we intend to expand that program. That's a wonderful volunteer by the name of Vicky Martin. If you don't know her, she's a great leader in the community as well. Next slide, please. Thanks, sir. We are expanding our services. Why? Well, we've identified twenty-one hundred and sixteen family households that are experiencing homelessness in our county. Seventeen hundred and seventy-seven of those are unaccompanied young adults in our age range. Their age range of service for Harbor Hope Center, and the crisis is growing. We want to add twenty-six beds. And that includes twenty beds for aged-out foster kids and and young adults eighteen to twenty-one, and six beds for single parents with ancillary rooms for their children. Next slide, please. It costs us five hundred and fifty dollars a week or twenty-three hundred and eighty dollars a month to provide the care home and services to one person. Now, when you, when I first saw that, now you go, wow, that's that's real money. I go, well, timeout. I have to have these care home staff twenty-four hours a day, so I have five staff in each of these homes. We have cut back at times, and it's it's very treacherous. For example, I'm our all emergencies happen on Friday. It's it's a rule. This Friday, we had a student have a seizure, and he was rushed to St. Anthony. We had an off-duty resident advisor who lived in the Peninsula who jumped in the ambulance and went with him. I went to the hospital to check on him as well, so there is all of this overlap that occurred. This student, like every student, had a mentor. This student, like every student, has a drug counselor assigned to him. By the way, shout out to Jeremiah Saucier at Crossroads Treatment Center in Lakewood. What an amazing man and amazing team, and they work very, very closely with us. They're embedded in our program as is Kitsap Mental Health and Duane DeBock, who's also this wonderful, wonderful man. If you don't know any of those guys, you sure should. But we feel that's really a small amount considering the extensive services we provide to each youth as well as twenty-four-seven staffing. By the way, our staff gets a Costco-esque wage. Nobody's making a lot of money in here, considering, you know, they have life and death in their own hands. And so like any organization, we struggle to get good staff. We're always having to work hard to keep these homes staffed. But I figure if you have a young person who who becomes homeless permanently or is incarcerated, I mean, those are million-dollar dilemmas for cities and counties. Then our budget for a year is eight hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars to provide twenty-four-seven staffing and support services necessary to take a young adult all the way from homelessness to independent living. Next slide, please. We're getting to the end. You've almost made it. Cost to provide services. So we're seeking capital to increase our bed count by twenty-six beds. And that is a schematic that Brian Ho did for us. Brian designed the Boys and Girls Club, what used to be Boys and Girls Club, and became the, it was actually the Hope Center. When they closed down, we we borrowed the word hope. We became Harbor Hope Center. And that, if you, if you have really good eyes, you can see there that 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 there's a, that there's an area for for, you know, it says single beds. We've actually made that two single beds in each room. And then a single parent area, and they intersect at a living space and a cafeteria. So there's a a lot of of ingress and egress that is solved by staffing and by scheduling. We have purchased land for this purpose. We purchased nearly eight acres. This is a good time to mention that I had a donor give me the money for that land, so it's paid for. I had a donor give me the money for our first care home, so it's paid for. We had the state help us with the second care home and give us essentially a loan. And that was the most complicated, painful thing I've ever done in my life, but thankfully, we did get that money and got that house opened, and and so that's how we we came about having nearly a million dollars in assets over the course of less than thirty-six months. Next slide. We have a board of directors that has the qualifications to guide us to long-term, long, long-term success. Dennis Brown graduated from the UW with a degree in law, science, and justice. He oversees, by the way, he played football under Coach Don James. So you gotta love that. For those of you who are old timers. He's the program manager for homeless veterans at the Washington State Department of Veterans for twenty years. That old, so what used to be called the Old Soldiers Home. I don't know if it's still called that, but out in Ording. He oversees that facility. He oversees a homeless facility in Bremerton as well for veterans. They're full, by the way. And they've got veterans as young as twenty and as old as ninety. And so he's, he oversees that. Gino Granberg is founding lead pastor of Harbor Christian Center. Big shout shout out to Harbor Christian Center because we have harbor in our name. Some people think we're affiliated. We're not. We do rent an office from them, so we have an office at thirty-seven eighty-one Rosedale. It's a beautiful office. I don't say this publicly, but we couldn't afford it. We pay a little rent check, and they give us that rent check plus a lot more every quarter. So honestly, we have it rent-free because of that organization, so I just want to I want to thank them in front of you, you folks, because they're a wonderful group of people. And they let us use the printer and the paper and the ink and all that stuff and 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 the and the water from the refrigerator. Jeff Catk, he is the board president. He's the founder and C E O. I won't go through all these. I'm going to highlight a couple of them. He is our board president. He was a founder and C E O of Metagenics. He built that company from nineteen eighty-three to twenty-ten until he sold it to Alticor, which is a holding company for another small company by the name of Amway. He built a very successful business, and and Harbor Hope Center was his effort really to to call a group of community leaders together to give back. Judy Hart is a C P A. We have lots of financial eyes on our organization because we do take state, federal, and county money. And good lordy, they hold us very, very accountable. Manuela Schwab helps us out. She had a master's degree in Internet National Business Administration for Russell Investment. Deanna Keller is a commissioner with the Port of Tacoma. Marilyn McColo is a former executive in the telecommunications industry. Jesse Young is the represents the twenty-sixth district in the Washington State House of Representatives. I did want to say that I actually called Larry Sequist. Y'all know Larry. Y'all got, you gotta love Larry Sequist. I called him one day, and I said, hey, we're trying to get more public servants on our board. On the right, the left, the middle, whatever, I said, we just want people to to know about us and represent us from the state. He's busy writing a book. It may be done now. But if you know of any public servants, including yourself, who'd be interested in a board position, we want I'm 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 a little bit naive here, but I want people all across the political spectrum. We're not a political organization. We're not a religious organization. We do not discriminate. We have people on the left and on the right. And those of you who know me, you know where I stand politically. It doesn't matter when we talk about homeless kids. We don't ever talk politics. We talk about how can we get this job done? Next slide, we're winding down, and you've been a great audience. Cost to provide services. This slide is cut off because of the way this, so I'm actually going to to, there we go. Now I can see it. I haven't been able to see most of these slides, so pardon me. I've just been kind of winging my way through here. We understand the city has been gracious to Fish. Fish is our partner. We hope that the city would consider also donating to our operating budget and also to our capital campaign. I know those are big numbers. They may be completely unreasonable. I literally have no idea. But I do know that our capital campaign is three million dollars. We do have a donor, I can tell you now, who is committed to me to pay all the bills until our project is shovel-ready, which I think is going to be at least sixty thousand dollars. And we did have a donor who paid for the land and we are actually gonna go to the state and everybody who'll listen and try to build what looks like a glorified gorgeous group home so that nobody, we do, we will have to get a conditional permit. And, uh, and we will have a beautiful nature trail and this house is just going to be, we talked about it. It's just gonna be beautiful. It'll be a gift to the community. We don't do any drug, uh, we're not a drug, uh, counseling center. If students have drug issues, we do get them into a drug program. We're only able to help the kids who are not using drugs and who are trying to get their lives straightened around. So Fish is a big partner. I know the city helped Fish and I would hope that the city would be able to help us as well. And then I believe there's one other slide. I, I, this picture, oh, I love this picture. So this is actually a picture of our kids standing in the intersection. And it says, share the love. And this was at the corner of, uh, this was my intersection near my house at the, the corner of Point Fosdick and Olympic. And you remember when we had all those kids showing up? It's like Black Lives Matter rally. And I was actually on the other side of the street, I think at that same, that same rally. And we just need the city council really to help us support these youth. We believe that we're not only breaking the cycle of homelessness, that we are going to create, we are creating a safety net for our students that will reduce the number of drug deaths that will, that can eliminate homelessness in Gig Harbor and can help identify challenges in our students before they manifest in critical ways. I know that's asking a lot and I know that's saying a lot, but I can tell you that we are absolutely committed night and day to make it difficult for our students to fall through the cracks. And we want to be a community that can say to the rest of the world, hey, we've pre- created a safety net. We got every nonprofit working together. We have a homeless coalition that meets every other Thursday. We didn't have that two years ago. We're not duplicating services. We're all working together. And we have a city that's growing very quickly and doing so at a very effective rate. So kudos to you and thank you to you for your leadership. And we would just love the city's partnership in any way possible.
Thank you so much. Daniel, that it's exciting to see how much you've grown. I was at the ribbon cutting for your girls' home and it seems like forever ago, but it wasn't that long ago. And you guys have just come a long way since then. And so we're, we're so glad to have you here. Um, Council, do you have any questions for, for Daniel? Councilmember Rook?
I do. Daniel, where's your new, uh, home going to be that you talk about?
This property is in Lake Bay.
Okay.
And, yeah, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
No, I was going to say that, that's a, there, there's a whole separate discussion about the problems with having a facility in Lake Bay. There's also a separate discussion about how good it is to have a property in Lake Bay. Having said that, we have in our budget for fiscal twenty-twenty-three, a new van, possibly two, if we can get a generous couple of car dealers. And we're hiring a driver who will make regular routes through the peninsula for these kids. And by the way, the kids won't come online till twenty-twenty-four, assuming the facility's built. But also for people who have transportation issues in the peninsula, because they, we really need to get them to services. TCC has been super helpful, Bates, all these other organizations, but we've got to get them there. So there's a transportation component as well.
You, you mentioned that you had gotten money from the state before. Are you going back to the state for additional funding for this project?
Yes, ma'am.
How does that work?
We found some money, uh, actually Representative Young found some money in the housing trust fund. And, uh, a little bit above my pay grade. I don't know how they found it. I know that it took me one year. And this, a stack of paperwork this thick to get that money in our bank account, literally it took over twelve months. It's very complicated, but we're gonna try it again because it did pay for the care home for girls.
Good, good. Thank you so much for being here and your presentation.
Thank you.
Um, Councilmember Rundenberg?
Yes, uh, thank you, Daniel. Uh, it's unfortunate you only had a short time to do this presentation. You spoke really quickly and I, I'm a little bit confused on a couple of items. You talk about a lot of homeless students, but the care homes are actually, uh, you, you're, your slide said you serve people eighteen to twenty-one. So those are young adults, really not students. So your program is really from students all through young adults. So is the new beds you're gonna be putting in, is that also for young adults eighteen and older?
That's a great question and I'm, I'm glad you brought that up so I can clarify that we've served students as young as thirteen. And we do those through the host home. And if they're the eighteen, we have the eighteen, we have the additional option of that care home. Uh, I will say quite a few over eighteen, nineteen-year-olds, they are students. They are in high school.
Cause you could go all the way to twenty-one years old, right?
Right.
Okay. All right. Thanks. That clarified a little bit.
Um, thank you. Councilmember Starset?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, Daniel, thank you so much for sharing that. I know it was a lot to cover in a short period of time. Uh, I'm very familiar with, with your organization and know many of your board members and have been to some other presentations. It's great to hear an update. And the progress that you guys are making. I too remember when that first house, um, was acquired for, for the young ladies and such an amazing, um, opportunity that we're able to give kids that otherwise don't have it. And so I applaud you and your, your board. I think you have a fantastic board. Uh, like you said, various different backgrounds, politics don't matter. Uh, we have to look out for our youth and, and you know, it is true in those numbers, um, you know, personally have, have known some, some young kids that have been in those situations and have been LTS, use that facility. So, um, keep it up. Let's get the larger place and, and help them out. Thank you.
Thank you for that, those good words.
Thank you. Councilmember Lycans?
Yes, thank you, Daniel. Um, I remember when I was doorbelling last year, meeting you at your house and having you come out and talk about the Harbor Hope Center and all the amazing work that you do. I'll tell you, as a pediatric care provider, matter of fact, I worked last night, so I'm a little sleepy here. I can tell you that the kids that age out of foster care, you know, that are from homeless families, it's such a gap in our system because we have the foster care system for the young kids. Um, and you have, like you said, you know, served young kids and, and have the host homes, which is amazing. But that eighteen to twenty-one, if you can get them in school, training on their own, you're keeping them from a path of homelessness, really, you know, for the rest of their lives. So I just want to applaud you. And I will tell you, we're in the beginnings, um, next, I think in the next study session, we'll be talking about it. Councilmember Starset and I are looking at doing a youth council in Gig Harbor. So would love to maybe talk to you about possibly having some representation from, uh, some of your, your residents. So it'd be great to have different perspectives, not just from the schools, but might be something we could consider. So I just want to thank you again, though.
Thank you. And, and I do remember meeting you and I painted my house and built a new porch since then. So come back and see.
Oh, you have. Okay. Well, thank you, Daniel, so much. You've given us a lot to think about. It's really, it's really sobering to hear how many kiddos in our school system are homeless and, and so thank you so much for what you do and, and, um, we'll be in touch and you, you're welcome to hang out with us the rest of this meeting if you feel like it. Or we wish you a really happy evening and just thank you again for being here.
I, I will leave you to your business and I really appreciate your time and thank you, Josh, also for helping me out there with that PowerPoint. Have a great day.
Thanks. Thanks so much. Okay. Um, our second discussion item is our twenty-twenty-two active CIP schedule update. And this is our Public Works Director, Jeff Langhelm, who's been up since early morning, I think. So thanks for being here with us, Jeff, for, and doing our, our, our beautiful ceremony this morning.
You bet. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I don't think, I was not up overnight like Councilmember Lycans though, so. On that. Yeah, I'm gonna share my screen. Uh, it's a typical format. We're gonna go through our project schedule, actual project schedule here. Hopefully you all can see that now. Okay. So I'm just gonna run through this real quick, uh, and talk, so just provide some talking points on where we are, uh, answer questions as we go and then, um, uh, in the whole package included, it included for your, uh, study session A, which includes the public outreach matrix. Um, and so I wasn't gonna go over that in this sort of specific question. So hopefully I'll cover most of it here as we go. All right, uh, make sure my notes are handy. Uh, Scanzy Netched, uh, we are proceeding through the, uh, final design phase to get the structural components added in. And we do hope to be out to bid in October, possibly, uh, having bid award at the October twenty-fourth council meeting. So still on progress and track for that. Uh, Sports Complex Phase One B, uh, we've received the thirty percent design from the consultant. The city has provided its comments back to the consultant, B C R A. Along with the thirty percent design, some of you may have heard and I've told a few people as we proceeded that the cost, construction cost for the site development itself has gone up significantly. Originally it was about three point three million. The thirty percent cost estimate, uh, is now at five point one million. This is significant increase without an adjustment of scope. So we are essentially using what we have seen all along. It's just construction costs have gone up that much. I am thinking that this estimate is a little high, uh, or hopefully a lot high, but we're going to have another estimate coming back into us. Uh, I think it's at sixty percent or ninety percent. So it'll be a few more, a couple more months, a few more months and we'll get it. Councilmember Henderson, you have hands up and back down.
I think you might have just answered it. I'm hoping that later on as costs hopefully go down, this cost will go down. It's not like we're stuck with it.
Agreed. Um, I can tell you for the, for the draft budget, twenty-three, twenty-four budget, I just submitted to finance last night, an updated estimate for this project and I put the five point one million in there. I hope that we can reduce that also as we proceed. Uh, this may be the last time you're seeing the Austin Honoring Art installation, uh, here at the Public Outreach Matrix, but we can take that off. That was successful. I, I, we didn't get a head count, of course, on people, but I don't know. Katrina and I were talking and I, it was over a thousand people there. It was, for those of you didn't see it. And I, a lot of people have asked me if we're going to be able to have access to the drone coverage that was, that was taken. I'm gonna be asking, uh, Pialt Drive, uh, they're the ones who, uh, brought that drone operator. And they also had a still photographer. There are many there though. And they also had a video photographer there. So, um, we'll see, uh, about that. Maybe someone else knows more about that.
Jeff, I just emailed back and forth with Laura, trying to get all of that, the pieces for that, knowing this was gonna be on your list. And she's in contact with the, the tribal member that was in charge of the videoing and the drone. And so we should have access to those soon.
Excellent. Looking forward to that.
That'll be great.
Okay, uh, moving on to coarse fishing home port design and permitting. The city has provided the consultant, uh, DCG's comments at their sixty percent design stage. Uh, we should be receiving ninety percent design in October or November. And as soon as we get those, we're gonna share those with the coarse fishing operators. Feel like I'm repeating myself from pre-earlier conversation. But, uh, we will take the input from the coarse fishing operators, wrap that up into our final bid documents, uh, in, later in spring of next year. Okay, moving on to city building projects, the electric vehicle charging stations, we haven't yet ordered the, um, hybrid vehicles. We're just kind of, we've got everything queued up, ready to go for the charging stations. Uh, but with other priorities on the lap of operations crew, we're just kind of holding off on this until we actually need to do the work. Councilmember Rook?
Yes, I believe in this new plan that was a bipartisan plan that was passed by, in the feds. There is money in there for municipalities, uh, switching over to hybrid or electric. Am, am I just way ahead? Have we heard anything from our lobbyists on this?
I have not heard from a lobbyist. I've heard the same thing that you have. I've not gone through and looked at all of the, uh, options that are presented to us or possibly available to us through this new legislation. But I hope to be able to, I'm sure the money will come through the state. Department of Commerce has been a great agency to work with on this. So I hope to be able to reach out to them soon and ask them what they're hearing, seeing and how we can be involved.
Great, great. Thank you.
Uh, Boat Visitor Center. So, uh, that project is moving forward. We are preparing to, uh, finalize the design next month and then award a contract in November and do the, complete the construction. Is, in spring of next year, there's some of the structural members for their roofing that, in, in the, uh, actually their insulation panels that need to be manufactured, that are fairly specialty and customized for this facility. So, uh, that's gonna be a lot of that timeframe in this, end of winter, first part of spring, and then we can actually get in and do the work. Uh, Councilmember Henderson?
Thanks. Uh, yeah, that, I guess that answers my question why there's a three, three and a half month delay there. So that's just, they're ordering stuff, getting it special. So there isn't gonna be a problem with the bid and whatnot. Good. Thanks.
Okay, um, Public Works Operations Center, we've talked about this one a little bit lately, but, uh, the, what are the contract amendment for the consultant? So that's, work is proceeding. Um, we, uh, hope to have this contract out for advertising again in November and then award a contract in December and start construction, um, in soon into the new year. Harborview Stinson, uh, that's almost completely wrapped up. A lot of punchless items that the contractors come back and, and finalize. But, uh, they're minor punchless items, um, should have that wrapped up by mid-October. Same thing with Rosedale Stinson. Uh, it's, so there's a, oh, Councilmember Barber, sorry.
I, I just wanted to commend you guys, Jeff, on the landscaping at Harborview Stinson. It's, it's really pretty and I've noticed the flowers coming into bloom and that kind of thing as the season progresses. I think, um, your team did a really nice job on that.
Great, thank you. What we did do last minute changes to try and minimize view impacts from, uh, the sidewalk. Uh, there's a couple of trees that are gonna be right there, but hopefully those are gonna be some, uh, just the smaller, not gonna be large diameter. We don't have, of course, redwoods there. It'll take up a large area, but yeah, minimal impacts. Uh, Rosedale Stinson, uh, that project is also coming to close. We received notice from uh, Washington State Department of Transportation, who's managing the federal money on behalf of federal highways, that they want to come in very soon and do the final audit. Well, we can't finalize the project until we get everything wrapped up. And there's a, one outstanding item is a, uh, uh, what they call a light driver for the LED element in one of the, uh, new streetlights that, uh, isn't working right. And so we've got to get the contractor to take care of that. Then we can close out the project. And so we have pushed WashDOT and the federal audit process off a little bit. So um, that just happened yesterday. Hopefully WashDOT hasn't put their foot down. They tend to work with us, but, uh, they, this project has been in the closeout stage for quite a while, so. Um, annual pavement maintenance, uh, that project is proceeding quite well. Really, they've got a few minor items left. One of the largest minor items that might have some traffic impacts is, uh, some work at the corner of, uh, Harbor Country Drive and the Harbor Corporate Center right along Point Fosdick. Uh, there's a, uh, curb ramp there that needs to be installed. So once that's in, it's all minor punchless items. So, uh, we really appreciate working with Miles and also for k- kudos to Jake Nelson for working some long days and nights to get through this project. So it, uh, it's turned out well. And then, um, mid-block crossings, um, I put on here, this is Fiftieth Street only to be sure we're clear talking about it since the Pacific Avenue one is completed. And we're holding off on the Soundview Crosswalk until the Water Main Project is, uh, probably gonna be moving forward next year. So, um, right now we have survey, we're, uh, have attentive location. Um, and we just need to finish our design, which it says the first, but I- And we just need to finish our design, which it says the first, but I last I heard from Shelby, we weren't quite done. So I've got to get that date updated. But we are having operations crew try and install that before the end of this year. Materials are all here, so it's just time to get it completed. Burnham Drive improvements, phase one A. In talking to the. Consultant and to staff, we shortened this construction contract. If we can get this contract out to bid and awarded this year. Then it's looking like it could be completed by the before the end of next year, which would be great. The key here is to get it awarded soon so that. A lot of those precast concrete items can get put into the queue for fabrication. And then when the springtime summertime comes, contractor can take finished prefabricated items and just put them in the ground. So that'll be a key. Right now, we're just waiting on final comments and approvals from US Army Corps for all the mitigation that we've been talking about in the recent months. Prentice Fenimore, that project is proceeding. We are going to be finalizing some design parameters here soon. We're going to have those as I've mentioned in emails and conversations with council. Getting ready to have conversations one on one with adjacent property owners about impacts the projects might have. To the front of their property, but within the right of way adjacent to their property. So. Thirty eighth Avenue Phase two, that is proceeding also. We've got the survey completed. And then we are going to be. Doing all of the final tree work to identify where the some of the impacts might be because of the existing native vegetation, both in right of way. And on adjacent property. So we'll have more soon, probably going to be coming back to council by the end of the year to at least report back on what we have. And maybe asking questions, maybe asking for input as we get down the line. I'm expecting there's going to be an alternative or two alternatives. We're going to come to council with. And I just want to be able to have some level of cost estimate what they what they might do alternatives might cost. So. More to come on. Emergency Water Intertight Canora Boulevard, we had a good meeting with Washington Water on this one. We have essentially the design is ninety percent complete. We need to just finalize a few details. And we're waiting back for Washington Water. We've given Washington Water three options. We're asking them to pick one of the options, and it has to do with how we're going to incising and who's paying for what. Because of where there might be benefit to the city might not be what Washington Water wants or needs for their. Operation of their water service area. So. We're finalizing those, but we're waiting on Washington Water to provide us with some responses on what direction they'd like to go. And if they want to, if they certain options might have them paying for some of this project. Redrive Fifty Fifth Street Water Main Improvements that got pushed out just a little bit. That's why it's highlighted in yellow. Contractor is moving on that one fairly quickly. Not that most people drive down that way, but contractor was able to install that water main in just a couple of weeks. They're doing services now. So once services are done, we'll be paving and getting out of there. This is an anomaly. This is a private road outside city limits, but in the city's water service area. So it's not as easy as if it was in right of way. There's you, there's temporary construction easements and everything else that we have to deal with. But paint construction is the contractor. They're working very well with us on everything and getting the work done in a very professional and timely manner. Lift station six down on Ryan Street, that is also proceeding. Just a heads up on that. We pushed the construction out a little bit. The contractor essentially was waiting for the standby generator to come in. The contractor did order that standby generator about a year ago. It just arrived on site about a week and a half ago. So as many things that take much, much longer than they have in the past, that was one of the items that took much longer than we. But we knew when we went into the award of the contract that was going to take a long time to get that generator. This is a different kind of generator than we usually have. This is a natural gas generator, meaning it runs on natural gas because it's down inside. The building itself, and we can't have diesel inside a building like that. So it was a little bit of a specialty generator, but we're seeing it everywhere, even the generator for lift station two over Bo View Plaza. That's an exterior generator that lead time on that is about right now about eleven months, and that's a standard diesel generator. But. Anyway, so we're proceeding. We're getting through this. I know George has said he can't wait till this project is done. Councilor Rook.
Yes, thanks. Can any of these generators be done with solar?
No, no, they they need too much. They have too much amperage necessary to be able to do that. We at some point, we very well may have. Batteries that power that are for generators, but that's not in the near future.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Woodhill Drive, that contractor is proceeding also might not look like it from the surface, but yeah, they're moving along really well. The consultant, the contractor staff are getting this project done with minimal hiccups. Murphy's Landing Marina Navigation Channel dredging that permitting is with US Army Corps. We're just waiting to hear back from them. Once we do, we'll just hand this off to Murphy's Landing for them to construct when they have the money to. Truman Plant Digestor upgrades. Chuck Roy is working on that one. He is. Yeah, busy working a lot of things and trying to get to this. Some of that's actually sitting in my lap and but we're are going to be proceeding on that soon. And then Cincinnati Slip Linings Sewer Main, we push that off into next year because of some constraints just on staffing. And we realize that this is definitely something we need to do, but it wasn't critical. So we have pushed that one off. Donkey Creek Daylighting, I hope to to get on council study session schedule soon with the North Creek. Cover replacement project, Donkey Creek Daylighting. I just keep that Donkey Creek Daylighting name there FYI, because that's what's in the budget. But the we hope to have a. Stakeholder meeting and then study session with council soon. Really would like to get it before we get through the budget process in case some of our cost estimates are off. We can modify those as we get into the last stages of budgeting. Councilmember Rook.
Is there any hope for any state funding from from this on this project?
We've applied for state funding. I want we've we've made two applications so far. One of them we did, we're not successful. We're sail away in here on the other. But I'm certain that as we proceed, we might not get funding for the design, but I'm certain that we proceed into construction. That we will receive funding from state or federal agencies.
For construction part of it.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Yep. Councilmember Henderson.
Thanks. Do you have the cost estimate yet? Have you looked at it or are they finished from the conceptual design point of view that is?
They have not. I don't have an updated one.
Okay.
Slip lining on Mountain Dew Place, that stormwater slip lining, that one is in the same boat as the Cincinnati Sewer Slip Lining. So we just pushed both those projects off collectively together. And then utility rate studies, I sure hope to get into that as soon as we get through the initial conversations on budget. So and that's the end of that. We go into public outreach matrix. One thing I didn't mention, and I'll just mention here real quick. I apologize, forgot to mention it when we were talking about Ed and Boat. So Ed and Boat is removed from our schedule. I just want to make sure everyone's aware. I saw an email. I there's a ribbon cutting at the Ed and Boat Yard House. On October sixth at five thirty PM. So just if you don't have that on your schedules, just make sure you're aware of that.
Thank you, Jeff. Appreciate your update so much and all your hard work. I know you guys are so busy. But I'm getting more waves now from the from the guys and gals as I'm driving around town. They they know my car now, so they wave back very enthusiastically. So it's been nice to just drive around and encourage them and just give them some some good waves and good smiles. So.
Yeah, I'm sure they appreciate that.
I think they do. Awesome. Thank you. And we will have the dates of the there's a couple ribbon cuttings coming up that week of October, the third through the seventh. So we'll have all those in the gigabyte and and press releases and social media channels and all all the places will have all those. Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, Mayor. Jeff, can you, will you be able to add the North Creek covert replacement to the public outreach matrix two? As we were already in the concept phase, so probably a good time to put it out there and that way you can add a few more comments to it.
Yes, good idea. We will add that to our public outreach matrix.
Thanks.
Great, thank you. If does anyone need a break or do you want to just sail right through to number three? Everyone's saying sail through. Okay, so our last item of business is our conservation property. This is phase three of the North Creek Project Conservation Easement. And this is our city administrator Katrina Knutson with the report.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, council. Nice to see you. Did want to say that Jeff and the mayor were just talking about ribbon cuttings. And it is October fourth that the Lions property for North Creek Conservation. The first one is going to be on the fourth of October. So Laura has coordinated that with the Lions family and the tribe, and so that is a go. So that week will be busy for us together. But thankfully, it's not a council week. So bonus.
There is that.
Okay, so regarding this topic, this is regarding our North Creek Conservation Area Phase Three that we just purchased. And if you'll recall, we had the Gig Harbor Landing Conservation Fund partnering with the city on the purchase of this. Property in support of our application to the Pierce County Conservation Futures. And ultimately, as you recall, Pierce County did not opt to fund this project. Because of that, the city moved forward with funding the entire project itself in order to close on that. A little bit of a snag with that is that the Gig Harbor Land Conservation Fund and Councilmember Denson, please feel free to jump in if I get any part of this incorrect. The Gig Harbor Landing Conservation Fund were some be able to support this because there would have been a conservation easement placed on the property from. Pierce County through Conservation Futures. Since the city purchased the property outright without. The grant funds from the county, there is no conservation easement on the property right now. And therefore, without that, we were not able to fully accept the fifty thousand dollars from the Gig Harbor Land Conservation Fund. So what we're coming to council with this afternoon and Daniel will hopefully jump in and say all of the proper legal explanations better than I will. But we as the city cannot place a conservation easement on ourselves. Because that would be binding to future councils. A future council could then decide they don't want that easement on the property anymore and make that change. So that would not satisfy the requirements that the Gig Harbor Landing Conservation Fund has. And so essentially, the council, what we're asking for today is, do you. Wish for us to proceed and utilize staff time in order to. Have or acquire third party entities such as the Great Peninsula Conservancy. Futurewise, some other entity that could put a conservation easement on our property for us in some form of an agreement. Or does the council wish to have this property ours outright with the city money and not have a conservation easement? On it. So that's really the only question today is which path to go forward with. And the council decides they would like a conservation easement so that we could accept the fifty thousand dollars. Then Jeff, Daniel and I will need to put our heads together and start looking for groups. I will say the Great Peninsula Conservancy has reached out and they said that they would be interested in sitting down with the city. Again, not a full agreement, but they would be interested in assisting us with that. Daniel, was there anything that I missed?
I think you said it perfectly, and I think if I kept talking, I would probably just confuse the matter at this point. So I'll happily do that if necessary, but that was basically it. Some there just needs to be another entity that can receive the easement from the city to make it. An actual agreement.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Daniel, and thank you for being here with us this afternoon. Appreciate it. Councilmember Denson.
Yes, and thank you, Katrina. I know when we decided it may have been an executive session to go ahead and purchase this without the grant. We all talked about the city putting an easement on for conservation. And so when I checked back with Katrina and she told me we couldn't do that, I was like, oh, no. And I just want to make a note that it's for me, we're not just putting this easement on so that we can access that fifty thousand dollars from this other group. I mean, that's great, but for me, we're putting this conservation easement on so that we can realize our vision as a council of creating this whole conservation area. So phase one has a conservation easement on phase two, if it happens. Will have a conservation easement on because both of those we've secured county money for. Phase three, we didn't get the grant. So that's why we're in the situation we are. But when I talked to Katrina about this. And it's it concerns me that, you know, we've got this vision for this whole North Creek area, this, you know, end of our harbor. And although we have this vision, a future council could decide to sell the property for commercial development. They could put a parking lot in there. If we don't have a conservation easement on there, you know, our vision, our legacy for this conservation. Property could could very easily go away. And, you know, we know how easily that could happen. So I did have the conversation with the executive director of Great Peninsula Conservancy. And although we don't have, we don't have an agreement, we haven't sat down with them yet. They were he, I should say, the executive director was wonderful. He was so excited. He said they've got donors in this area. They want to do more in this area. For them, this would be a really meaningful project because again, if they don't step in or somebody doesn't step in, this property is not conserved. This property, you know, we could sell it next year or a future councils could sell it next year. And they told me it could be anywhere. The cost, there's a cost to this anywhere between fifteen and twenty five thousand. That covers the easement negotiation, their attorneys, you know, our attorneys. And it covers they they get extra money that they invest so that for perpetuity, every year they can come and monitor this easement. Which is what we want them to do to make sure we're not turning it into a parking lot. So it's a one time cost. And when I spoke with with Mr. Daniels at the GPC, he was very confident they could come up with most, if not all of these dollars. And I know the Conservation Fund would be really happy to assist in any way with that as well, because the whole point is is that we want it conserved. So I'm hoping that that we move forward with this. I know it concerns me a little bit that we've had conversations. Well, from the very beginning, when we had conversations with the sellers of this property. We told them consistently that this we were purchasing this to conserve it for perpetuity. We've talked to the community. Oh, we're going to conserve this for perpetuity because, you know, we at that time, you know, I think we all thought we were going to get the county grant. And there was just no question about it. So to me, it's it's the right thing to do. It fills our vision of this whole area of our town. And and I'm hoping you all will agree and I'll do everything I can to help make it make it happen so it doesn't take any more staff time than it's absolutely necessary. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you. And Robin, that's very well explained. And the thing is, why is that we do get a conservation easement like this? I think my question is perpetuity is a long time. If we go with a third party and maybe Daniel can answer this. What happens if the third party, let's say it's a smaller group becomes insolvent? Does the does the conservation easement disappear? I mean, clearly, if we could get something through Pierce County, it's unlikely Pierce County is going to go and solve it might, but chances that are pretty small. What happens to third parties that if they became insolvent in the next ten years or fifteen because perpetuity is longer than that? What I guess I'm confused about what might happen and what are our options then?
Do you want Robin or Daniel? Who's who's on first?
So Councilmember Denson jumped on there, but I'm happy to speak to it as well.
I was gonna, I was gonna say something else. So Daniel, you could speak to that one.
Sorry, yeah, absolutely. Well, so so we definitely want to get a group involved. So. It's an easement. And I'm going to get you guys are going to test my legal, my law school knowledge. Test my legal, my law school knowledge. It the type of easement is 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 for the person or for the entity not running with the land. So you can have like your neighboring property getting an access easement that could run with the land for that property. This is not one of those. And so it could go away. And so you do want to get an entity that has a trajectory out there. And that's why it's something like a futurewise. I don't know this entity could be perfectly perfectly good. So we do want to make sure that we have an entity that's going to last for a while to make sure that the easement has the benefit as anticipated through that whole time.
Is there any way to get Pierce County? Involved in the. Do they have to grant this money in order to do that or own the property or? Is there some way they could we could pay them and say, hey? Put on this conservation easement for us? Just it's just a thought.
Well, so 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 the conservation easement i- is something that the city would put on and you need a receiving party for that easement. And so we need somebody and, you know. You'll hear me say it from time to time for any contract like that, any agreement, we need consideration, right? We can't just, you know, give, give, give without taking something. And so. The management of it and the oversight of it, which Councilmember Denson described really well, or sorry, maybe that was Katrina, when he. Somebody explained really well, you know, i- is how that would look and feel. The costs, you know, there's certainly a benefit to the city for somebody taking on, you know, the easement. And so I I think we can get somebody involved, but. What I don't know and 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 I'll defer to Katrina or Councilmember Denson is whether the county is in the business of managing. You know, easements elsewhere. I mean, that likely is something that they just don't have the resources for, but I don't know that.
I I can't answer that. So the way they do that is through the same program, the Conservation Futures Program. So we would have to go. And apply in twenty twenty three through their regular round and ask them. If they would put a conservation easement on our property, I don't think it would be competitive because there's all sorts of criteria. One is. Has, you know, supposed to be for larger properties, forty acres or above. We're not. Supposed to be, you know, at some risk of development. Well, it really isn't because they know we don't want to develop it. So probably wouldn't be real competitive when we're talking years. For that for that to happen. So I don't know futurewise. I know GPC, but you know, both these organizations would be great for Tara is another one. We could certainly talk to a number of them and. I think it would be a lot less expensive and a lot quicker to go through one of these entities that they do this for. This is what they do. I don't know futurewise, but I assume it's similar to Great Peninsula Conservancy. This is what they, you know. GPC does in our area. And because one of the benefits, I would say of. Negotiating our own conservation easement with an organization like GPC is that we've got some control. The county easements tend to be extremely strict. It is what it is. There's not much negotiation there for us. You know, we can make sure that we've got the right to put in trails. We can write in, you know, that maybe we want to put a picnic shelter in someday. Or maybe we want to put some lighting around that. We've got the opportunity now to give us some flexibility that fulfills our conservation. Priorities, but also gives us flexibility that we're not, you know, hand tied. Super tight in terms of what we can do because I know we want to put a sidewalk through there leading up to the rest of Burnham. I mean, it's a great property for a lot of reasons for us.
Thank you, Councilmember Denson. Councilmember Look.
Thank you. Did I hear that if the third party goes defunct, it does not do away with the easement on this property and it will be conserved forever?
No, you did not hear that. The the opposite.
So it it if the third party goes defunct, then it would not be conserved forever.
Correct.
So how do we get this conserved forever?
Are you sure about that, Daniel? Isn't it on the title that it you would be a problem because there's no one to enforce it.
Yeah, there precisely. There there's no, there's no beneficiary or there's no other side anymore in that deal. And so we need to make sure because because again, it's not. It's not like the two adjacent property situation where like you have an access easement running across. You're you have access across my property as long as your property exists, it gets to go across my property. This is more of a beneficial. Easement.
But we could lose this. Conservation on this property.
Let me let me tonight. I'm sorry, I'm interrupting the other two people, but just to follow this this chain. GPC and probably futurewise organizations that have been around for a long time. They've absorbed other land trusts. I am very confident that if GPC was going away, they're huge. Then they would be taken over by the National Land Trust or another land trust. And I'm sure they would take care of their assets. I mean. I'd be pretty confident of that.
That's their is what they do. So yes, I would assume is the same.
Is there any way to make sure that? I mean, can we do something to make sure that this is going to be conserved forever?
We're doing it.
That's what we're talking about right now is getting counsel to asking counsel if you would like that to happen. Then we need direction to go forward to try to find a third party that will put this easement on the property.
You just told somebody just told me that the third party, if it winked, if it went to front, then the easement would not be there.
And that's why we would find a third party that would not be likely to dissolve anytime soon.
All right, thank you.
Uh, counselor. Or if they were to dissolve, they would be likely. Absorbed by.
Yes.
A larger. Other land trust.
Yes.
And I apologize. I did not meant to say futurewise. I meant to say for Tara. Long day, so. We'll start with F. My apologies.
Councilmember Rodenberg.
Yeah, first, thanks a lot, Roger, for bringing this up. That was a really good point. Secondly, I would suggest. That if Robin is willing to let her handle this, she seems to have a really good handle on this and the. People that she spoke to, like she said, they would be. Absorbed by someone else even larger. And even if it were to go to defunct, then we just do it all over again. But I think speed. Expedience here is is necessary. And we told everybody we're going to do it. I think we ought to just do it with. With Robin's suggestion and. Mrs. Knutson's buy in. So I I suggest we just do it as quickly as we can. Let Robin do the. Legwork and bring it back to us and tell us we can do it. I don't think we need to waste time. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Barber, did you have a a comment or question?
What Lisa.
Okay. Okay, great. Well, it sounds like we have clear direction that we do want to get an easement on this property, no matter what. So we'll figure out how to be creative and do that and. I agree utilizing Councilmember Denson's expertise on this, I think would be great. So Katrina and Daniel. Will all get together and figure out, you know, where to what the next steps are. But thank you, council, for your. Direction and your great questions that, you know, help us think about more than just the immediate future. So really appreciate that. Very much. So any other comments, Daniel, Katrina, Jeff, on on this particular item?
Mayor, I would just say that. I've I've sat on the executive director on the board of Great Peninsula Conservancy prior. Mid after two thousand and ten before. And during my first initial years here, and they are a great organization and they have a lot of properties that they care for. Very, very well. And so I I do. My personal hat and also my professional hat. I do think that GPC were able to have this with them would be a great partnership. Opportunity to potentially additional conservation funds available for the for the city.
Great. Okay, Councilmember Rodenberg.
Yeah, just one more thing. Councilman, Councilperson Denson, you mentioned that you thought there was funding. Somewhere that would help pay for the cost of it, putting getting into the Conservancy.
Yes, I mean, and again, nothing's in in writing, but the executive director said he has a number. They have some funds that they were going to help. Us with an appraisal on another property that we ended up not using. So he's like, we've got those funds. It's a local donor wants to do something just like this, secure land. You know, and habitat in Gig Harbor. And he was very optimistic that he could find. The rest of the money or close to the rest of the money and.
Then then roll that up into your original task. Thanks.
Okay. Thanks, Lee.
Hey, I. I was just looking at my calendar for next week and I do have a meeting next Wednesday with the Conservation Director from GPC. So I'll be sure to reach back out to council and Robin or Councilmember Denson, I'm sorry. Feel free to join me. I know that I'm busy, but you are way busier. So happy to report back to the entire council on the outcome of that conversation.
Great. Great. This is so exciting, council. It really is. This is just great. It's great work, what what? What you're doing and and conserving these properties in the heart of our downtown. It's just. It's wonderful. So. Okay, if there's nothing else from for the good of the order, I would entertain a motion to adjourn and for Councilmember Liggins.
I was just gonna make a quick shout out that Councilmember Rodenberg, I believe, has a birthday. Is it today or tomorrow?
It's tomorrow.
Okay.
Should we sing to you? I think we should.
Two, three.
That was really pitiful for singing.
Terrible motion to adjourn.
Thank you very much, all of you.
You're very welcome. Thank you for bringing that forward. All right, any anyone else have anything else to add? Okay, well, it's been a really big fun day and just an exciting day. So have a great evening. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'm moving.
Okay.
And we all second.
Good night, everybody.